Good evening, I'm Toni Carter, Ramsey County Commissioner and Chair of the Ramsey County Board, elected from District Four to represent Crocus Hill, Denoyur Park, Hamlin Midway, Highland Park, Lexington-Hamlin, McAllister-Groveland, Miriam Park, Smelling-Hamlet, Summit Hill, St. Anthony Park and Summit University, some of those communities in part. On behalf of my colleagues on the Ramsey County Board of Commissioners and Ramsey County staff here this evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the 2021 Supplemental Ramsey County Budget and Tax Public Hearing. We're joined by translators of Spanish, Mong and Somali, as well as ASL interpreters tonight. And so translators, if you could please now introduce yourselves, asking whether attendees would like translation and also letting our attendees know that they can raise their hand if joining by Zoom or ask verbally if joining by phone. And I'll call on for that purpose first, Oscar, to please start us off if anyone would like Spanish translation. Oscar.
Oscar, your microphone is currently muted. Would you unmute, please?
And if Oscar's having a little bit of difficulty, if you're not there yet, Oscar, I'm gonna call on Said first then to ask if anyone would like translation in Somali. Said? I wonder if we're having a little difficulty getting our translators in. I'm gonna try this one more time, starting with Oscar. Okay, I'm gonna try Katrina and see if Katrina can get in regarding translation in Mong. Katrina?
Yeah, good evening. This is Katrina Hare. Thank you.
Katrina, thank you very much. Let's try Oscar again. Oscar, are you there for translation in Spanish? All right, one more time, I'll try Said and if we can't get Said now, we'll come back before we start to ensure that we get folks in for translation. Said, are you there? All right. Well, we'll come back to that. I want to make sure to thank all who are joining us virtually or by phone this evening and to let you know that following tonight's hearing, a video will be available through our website, RamseyCounty.us. I'd also like to introduce you, before we go back to our translators, to your Ramsey County Commissioners and our county manager. So we'll start those introductions off. Commissioners, please, as I call your district, introduce yourself and let our audience know what cities and neighborhoods you represent. I'll call first on District One.
Thank you, Chair Carter. I'm Commissioner Nicole Dreifretham. I represent District One. District One includes the cities of Arden Hills, Shoreview, North Oaks, Gem Lake, Badness Heights, White Bear Township and portions of Spring Lake Park and Blaine that are in Ramsey County. And I also represent three quarters of Mounds View.
Thank you very much. District Two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Commissioner Mary Jo McGuire. I represent District Two and I have the one-fourth of Mounds View, the city of Mounds View, also the entire cities of Lauderdale, Little Canada, Roseville and New Brighton and the Ramsey County portion of St. Anthony Village.
Thank you. District Three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Trista Matas Castillo, Ramsey County Commissioner, District Three. I represent Hamlin Midway, Como, Frog Town, the North End, parts of the East Side and the whole city of Falcon Heights.
Thank you very much. District Five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Rafael Ortega, Commissioner for District Five, which includes Highland, Mc Grove, West Seventh, Downtown, the West Side, Mounds, Railroad Island and Sweet Hollow on the East Side and the Capital District neighborhoods.
Thank you. District Six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I'm Jim McDonough and I represent most of the East Side of St. Paul.
Thank you. And District Seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Victoria Reinhardt and I do represent one precinct on the East Side, so I'll start off with that of St. Paul. And I also represent the cities of Maplewood, North St. Paul and White Bear Lake.
And thank you. Not only the county managers here with us as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I'm Ryan O'Connor. I'm the Ramsey County Manager. Happy to be with you this evening.
Thank you. And now, would you all please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? And for clarity, I'll ask at this time that you all mute your microphones. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we move on, I want to go back for translation and call on Oscar for Spanish translation. Oscar. I will call on Said for translation in Somali. Said? I am not hearing Oscar or Said, so we will come back once again before we begin. Thank you so much. And I'd like to just share a few words for context to explain tonight's proceedings before inviting Commissioner Reinhardt, who was the Chair of our Budget Committee, to present the budget. As has been evidenced by our needing to be here virtually tonight rather than in person, this has been a year like no other. COVID-19, the pandemic, has affected so many of our families. So many have suffered mournful losses. And because of that, I'd like to ask that we take a brief moment of silence to recognize the hundreds in Ramsey County who've lost their lives to COVID-19 and the thousands and thousands of families who've been affected by this pandemic. A brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you so much. So COVID-19 has brought serious hardships to our families and also to our businesses. One thing that Commissioner Reinhardt will be sharing tonight with you is that since the approval of our two-year 2021 budget last December, that's 2020 through 2021, we were approved in December and since then and the creation of our supplemental budget, on which we're inviting you to comment tonight, we've adjusted the proposed property tax levy from a previously planned increase of 4.5% down to 0%. This is in response to the difficulties our families and businesses are facing today and that we expect will continue throughout 2021. Please know that every hour of every day of this pandemic, we in Ramsey County have been working to provide county services to those that need them most while maintaining responsible fiscal stewardship of your hard-earned tax dollars. And even though we're not proposing an increase to the overall property tax levy, we know that individual property owners will experience changes in their valuations and property taxes. So we've created a video that will help explain how these changes occur and it is available at RamseyCounty.us/publichearings. We'd encourage you to take a look at the video. We know that you may be attending this meeting with questions about changes in your property taxes and valuations of your individual properties. And if you're joining us tonight with these types of questions, our county assessor and his staff are available right now by telephone. You can call them at 266-2131. So this public hearing is an opportunity for you to share your thoughts on the budget and property taxes with commissioners. We're in a hearing format and so we'll be listening to you, but we will not be responding directly to questions. If you are here with questions about your property valuation, again, I'd encourage you to call our assessor's office, that number 266-2131, and they're available during, at that number during business hours as well. If there are general questions and themes that arise from tonight's commentary, we will answer those following the hearing on our website at RamseyCounty.us/budget. Just know that your feedback is very important to us as we move forward toward our final budget approval, which will be on December 15. So here's how we'll proceed this evening. We'll ask for your patience as we settle into conducting this hearing virtually for the first time. Each person who would like to will have two minutes to address board members. We'll go in order of those who've signed up in advance, followed by those who are joining us by telephone, and then we'll proceed to those who are joining virtually. We'll ask all who are speaking to state their name and their city of residence before beginning to provide testimony. We do want everyone who wishes and we do want to give everyone who wishes an opportunity to speak. And again, this is a public hearing format, so we won't be answering the questions directly. We will provide an FAQ in response to any themes following the hearing on our website, as mentioned before. Before handing this over to Budget Chair Reinhardt to present the budget, I will try one more time to ensure that we have the translation as available to us to call on Oscar.
Madam Chair, Oscar has disconnected to attempt to rejoin. I want to note that our translators were being heard in their specific language channels and we have other folks testing that right now. So unfortunately, we weren't able to hear them simultaneously. But if participants
That's great.
were to click on the interpretation box at the bottom of their control panel, they'll have those language options available to them at this time.
I'm so thankful that you shared that with me and so that we know the translation will proceed as planned.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, Oscar, we can now hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, sorry. I think something's happening with the system. Good evening, Commissioners. Buenas noches a todas las gentes. Yo voy a traducir a la gente y ayudar a la gente que habla español. Estaré ayudándole para que puedan a través de mí comunicarse con los comisionados de sus propiedades. Si tienen algunas preguntas, yo estaré ayudándole a ustedes. Gracias.
Thank you very much. I know that Mike assured that you're Mike was Oscar. I'm gonna check to see if in fact Said is also with us. Said there? All right, and although we may not hear Said here, we know that he is available in the translation room and so that will be available to us. And now I will call on our Budget Chair, Commissioner Reinhardt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I again am Victoria Reinhardt. I am a Commissioner from District Seven and also Chair of the Budget Committee. And I'd like to begin actually by thanking Commissioner Trista Matas Castillo. She is Vice Chair of the Committee and we've had, along with staff and leadership, a lot of work took place this year. So I wanted to give her a special thank you tonight. Tonight, I respectfully submit the proposed Ramsey County Supplemental Budget for public comment. This fall, the Ramsey County Board of Commissioners approved a maximum property tax levy of $326,73,145 to finance the 2021 budget, which calls for total spending of $747,471,298. As Chair Carter mentioned, it was in December of last year that we approved the biennial budget for 2020 and 2021 and that budget called for an increase of $15 million in 2021, which was a 4.75% property tax increase. Due to the COVID-19 impacts on our families, residents and businesses, the supplemental budget that we are seeking your comment on tonight has been adjusted so that there is no increase to the property tax levy. For sake of comparison, the State Department of Revenue recently published that the average of all counties in Minnesota is a 1.5% increase this year. It's important to note that property taxes fund about 44% of our budget in Ramsey County. Obviously, trying to meet this challenge of target of zero meant that leaders and staff from across the county have identified a number of items that try to get us through this and they are short-term solutions. They include keeping unfilled positions open, putting off investments in technology and using one-time funds from the county's fund balance. Although these, although these adjustments keep our budget structurally sound and retain our key priorities, which is incredibly important, we know that it's not sustainable for the long term. To better understand these adjustments in the overall budget picture, please visit RamseyCounty.us/budget. The documents and the videos that are linked there contain many levels of information, whether you're looking for just a general overview or a line item detail. And again, that website is RamseyCounty.us/budget. Thank you for your feedback and your interest in participating in the hearing. Your input is essential. Please know that we make every effort to provide Ramsey County taxpayers with essential services at an affordable cost. Looking ahead to next year, we know that the effects and hardships caused by the pandemic will continue and we are working hard to squeeze every nickel to continue providing essential services to the community efficiently, equitably and cost-consciously. The county remains in strong financial standing as evidenced by the fact that we are one of the few counties in this nation holding a AAA bond rating by the top rating agencies and have held this rating since 2001, which quite frankly is pretty amazing. Essentially, this is like having a great credit score and so it saves taxpayers millions of dollars literally each year. After we hear from you this evening, the final budget approval, as the Chair mentioned, by the Board will occur on December 15. The final approved property tax levy may not exceed the maximum levy that was set in September, but it could be lower. Changes to the budget may occur by actions taken by the Board, but there will be no increase in the levy as a result of those changes. We're here to listen to you tonight. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to your comments and suggestions and at this point, I will turn it back to Board Chair Toni Carter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Reinhardt. So now, before we get started, just a couple of reminders on procedure. This is a public hearing. In this format, we do not respond. We're here to listen. If there are general questions and themes that arise, we will answer those following the hearing on our website at RamseyCounty.us/budget. If you're here with questions about property valuations, the county assessor and his staff are available right now by telephone and that number is 651-266-2131. We want to give everyone a chance to speak that wishes to. You'll have two minutes to share your thoughts before we move on to the next attendee. Please be respectful of that time and also of tone. This is a safe, open and respectful space and we will moderate as necessary to keep it so. Let's ask again if anyone has joined with like translation in Spanish, Mong or Somali. Oscar. Then Katrina and then Said. I am assuming that they are heard in their rooms, in the translation spaces. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, Madam Chair. At this point, I don't see that we have any attendees who are requesting translation.
Great. All right, thank you. So thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. And now we'll call the 2021 Supplemental Ramsey County Budget and Tax Public Hearing to order. And Mike Lindsey from our communications team will assist as our moderator tonight. Mike, would you please like to start things off for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin tonight by inviting those who've pre-registered to speak to do so first. Remember that you have two minutes and when it is your turn to speak, you'll be promoted out of the attendee role and into a panelist role. There is a brief delay while that happens. So if it appears that you are leaving and immediately rejoining the meeting, that's to be expected and of course, your time will start once your audio is connected. When you're on the clock, you do have the ability to turn your video feed on. That's truly up to you. You're encouraged but not required to do so. For those who do wish to speak, I would ask that you raise your hand and leave it raised. We will be calling on you and unmuting you in that order. Raising your hand can be done in the taskbar at the bottom of your screen. That will in fact hold your place in line. Our first speaker tonight is Jim Fox of St. Paul. I have just one Jim, two Jims in the chat, one that does not have a last name. I'm going to assume for the moment that this is Jim Fox and bring him into our meeting. For those who are in the queue and waiting and wish to speak, would you please adjust your screen name to show your first name and last name? It will help us tremendously as we progress with the logistics tonight. Okay. Jim, you've been invited to unmute your microphone.
Okay, okay. This is Jim Fox. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jim, and your two minutes begins right now. Thank you.
I listened to the beginning of this meeting and it sounds like there are no major increases in taxes, but I have a business and my taxes went up 27% in one year. It seems rather enormous and is the business is being treated differently than residents? Did anybody hear me?
Jim, thank you for being here tonight. This is a public hearing and we're asking you to take two minutes for comments. Questions will be responded to in general theme on our website following the public hearing. Did you have additional comments or questions? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I was just wondering why commercial property has gone up so radically and the taxes have gone up so radically in one year and they don't seem to go up for the residents? The homeowners.
Thank you, Jim. Of course, individual circumstances can be responded to at 266-2131. That's 651-266-2131. And we will be responding to the general themes later. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker on the signup list is Deanna Monier of St. Paul. I don't see Deanna as an attendee at this time. Deanna, if you are here, would you please adjust your username accordingly and we will come back to you in short order. Our, we will next go to the folks who have called in. At this point, Madam Chair, we just have two folks who have joined by phone and I'll identify them by their phone number. If you hear your phone number and wish to make a comment, please say so at that time. Again, I'll call each number twice and we'll begin with If you wish to make a comment, please unmute and note that at this time. Again, that phone number is 612-308-2425. Hearing no response, Madam Chair. I'll move on to our second caller. That number is If you wish to make a comment, please unmute and note that at this time. Again, that phone number is 651-488-4824.
How does someone that calls in unmute?
They hear an audio prompt, Commissioner, when I, when I prompt them to allow their microphone, they hear the audio prompts and how to do that on their particular device. Hearing no response from that number. Madam Chair, I'm going to move on to our folks who have joined by computer, tablet or smartphone. Again, if you wish to be one of these folks, please raise your hand and leave it raised. The first person in that list is John Reynolds and John, bear with us as we promote you to panelist, at which point you'll have access to your microphone and video feed. John, it looks like you're in and your two minutes begins now.
All right, thanks. Yeah, hi, man. My name is John Reynolds and I'm a resident of St. Paul. Thanks for taking my comment. I was, you know, wanted to attend. So my wife and I own a modest four-unit home in the Summit University neighborhood of St. Paul. And we just received notice that our property tax has increased an amazing 18.6% for 2021. So in fact, our property tax has increased 241% from 2016 over the past five years. So I realize that some of this increases due to property valuation adjustments over the past five years, but I can't imagine any scenario in which our actual property value is somehow worth 241% more than it was five years ago. And we actually, you know, our goal is to offer high-quality living with below-market rents and so we rent out our apartments for $800 a month to $1,000 a month, including utilities, but our taxes alone are now almost $10,000 a year. So my concern is that if other multifamily owners have experienced similar increases of 240% in five years, rents will continue to rise. So I guess my comment is just that we look seriously at small landlords and the increases that folks like us have seen over the and the increases that folks like us have seen over the past few years, and try to find some other solution. I know it's, you know, probably challenging times from a budget from all, but I don't want to see, you know, these increased rents shift to renter or these increased taxes shift to renters. So I guess that's my main comment, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a reminder of 651-266-2131 for individual questions. Thank you.
Thank you. One person I forgot to point out is our timer, Megan Fournier, for our speakers and commenters tonight. While you're doing so, you'll see Megan in your gallery view, who will give you a prompt when you have 30 seconds remaining in your time, and then a polite reminder when your time expires. Our next hand in our queue belongs to the username M. Taylor. And M. Taylor, I'm going to promote you now. Just a reminder that when you begin to do so, please with your first and last name and your city of residence.
So I'm speaking for my wife and I. I'm Kai Lawson. My wife is Melissa Taylor, hence M. Taylor. We live in St. Paul over on the east side. We're first-time homeowners. We started living in our home June 1st. We got a notice in the mail with our estimated market value for our home being about what it was listed for. Subsequent evaluations have shown that to be low. Our new valuation has gone up on the same piece of mail, so property values seem to be increasing, but our property tax has gone up 40% according to this statement. And there's some interesting breakdowns. Almost a third, maybe almost a quarter of the increase is going towards the Regional Railroad Authority. Neither of us are opposed to the railroad, but we're wondering what the increase is about, especially now when budgetary restrictions are really tight. And we're also wondering what this under state general tax Item B, other local levies, that's also about a quarter of our increase. That's not broken down. Is there any way to get increased transparency or breakdown to see what those levies are?
Thank you for your question. Just a reminder of the 651-266-2131 number for individual questions, and also that we have a description of the ways in which taxes appear, and in fact, the ways in which they change on our website as well. By video, it is RamseyCounty.us-publichearings. Thank you. Mike? I won't I won't continue to remind, but I just want to make sure people understand this is a public hearing. We're here to listen and not respond to questions tonight and make certain that they are aware of that information. I believe it's also appearing on our screen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker is under the username DA Lord, and we'll bring you into the panelist chat now. DA Lord, it looks like you're unmuted, and so I think we'll begin your time right now.
My name is David Lord, and I live in New Brighton. I've been in this community, in this this home, actually, for 30, over 30 years. And over the past year, we've received a number of increases. One was an assessment increase. My my property assessment went up 19.4% between 2020 and 2021. Then, in addition to that, there was a 15.4% increase in tax from 2019 to 2020, and now we're coming back with the supplemental budget, which adds another 9.1% onto that on top of that. So I'm kind of curious where these numbers come from and why they're so substantial. It's we talked about a zero increase in property tax, and yet mine shows an indicator of 9.1% increase. And that's just between the the stated tax for 2020 and the proposed tax for 2021. Now, I know I'm not going to get an answer right now, so it it I wanted to state those things, lay those things out there. But I was most concerned initially, and I can talk with the assessor's office about the property value increase of 15.4, not 15.4%, 19.4% for the last two years, from 2020 to 2021. My property value increased 19.4%. That seems like a high jump for one year, which, of course, is reflected in in the taxes that I'm expected to pay. And then we come through and add supplemental changes, which add another 9.1% to the property tax. So I'm a taxpayer that's kind of curious about why all this, all of this, all of a sudden, and what is it that we can do to slow it down? Thank you.
For your question. Thank you for your question, Mr. Lord. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we don't have any other folks with a hand raised in the queue. What I might suggest is calling the two phone numbers that are still in the chat once more, just to be sure that we aren't missing anyone. So I'll go back to that procedure. The I'll call these numbers twice if you wish to make a comment, and you are and you if you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself via the function star six. The function to do that is star six and do so at that time. So the first number is 612-308-2425. And our second phone number is Hearing no response, Madam Chair. We do have one other hand raised now that belongs to Elena McNamara, and we'll promote Elena at this time.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Elena McNamara. I live in St. Paul, and I wanted to speak just briefly. In reviewing the budget, it looks like the Financial Assistance Services Department is used to being understaffed, and that seems pretty concerning given the current conditions that we're all living in and all of the struggles people are having. I'm wondering if more money can be redirected in this budget towards them, perhaps shifted away from, say, the sheriff's office, because I think that it would really be a better use of that on those funds to, you know, give people what they need upfront, and I know that a lot of people are struggling, maybe turning to, you know, things that they don't want to do to get, you know, what their families need, and I just think it would be a lot better use of that money if we can if we can shift some of that in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Mike, are there others?
Madam Chair, I see no other hands raised at this time. There are folks attending that wish to speak. I would invite them to hit that raise hand feature at the bottom in their control panel now, and they would be next to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll hold just for a few moments before we close, in case there are others who want to raise their hand to speak. You will be recognized before we close the public hearing, if that is the case. But I'll just make a few comments. Thank you so much for your questions and also for your comments. As indicated, because this is a public hearing, we are not responding directly tonight. However, there is a phone number that you can call to speak with our assessor. That number is 651-266-2131. We would love to respond to your specific questions about your taxes and valuations at that number tonight before we close the public hearing, and of course, that number is also available during business hours following tonight. I do also want to remind you that for specific themes that have arisen tonight that we have heard, we will be posting to our FAQ on the website. So please look forward to that page going up to respond to general themes. Questions about, of course, how property taxes rise can be answered specifically at the 266-2131 number, or the video is available also on our website, again, RamseyCounty.us, so that you will be able to better interpret your own statement and/or understand generally how property taxes can change. And then finally, of course, each commissioner is on the line tonight and welcomes your email or phone calls if, in fact, you have a specific question for the commissioners. We are here virtually tonight, different than regular times when we would be able to immediately come down and talk with you. But certainly, please check our website for any telephone number or email address that you might need to be in touch with your commissioners. And thank you for understanding the necessity of this format tonight so that we are all COVID-safe and sound at our screens, and unfortunately, not in person. Again, thank you for your comments and for your questions. I want to check with Mike to find out if others have signed up or raised their hands.
Madam Chair, we do have one new hand and a hand from a person who has commented previously. Let us begin with the hand from Corey Cole. Corey, we're going to promote you now, and once you're connected, we'll get you on the clock.
Hello, my name is Corey Cole. I live in St. Paul in the Cathedral Hill neighborhood. I would just like to express for the commissioners a consideration my community's interest in affordable housing as a main budget priority. Recent studies have come out from scientists at UCLA and Johns Hopkins that estimate that evictions alone have been directly responsible for about 10,000 excess COVID cases, excess deaths, and 437,000 excess cases. I think that especially now, but always, everyone deserves a right to housing, and we really need to look after our neighbors because their health impacts ours. To find the money to do this, I'd be happy to take some, you know, like from the sheriff's budget, as someone suggested earlier. Police spending is not necessarily correlated with greater public safety outcomes. But, you know, as as long as people are housed, that's all I really want to say. I saved my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Mike?
Madam Chair, the remaining hand in our queue is from DA Lord, who shared a comment with us before. With your permission, I will allow DA Lord, that combo of folks, to speak, and just I guess the easiest way to ascertain the intention.
Thank you. Let's go ahead.
DA Lord, I've asked you to unmute your microphone and address us at this time, please.
My question really is more the letter notifying the supplemental increase arrived at my home Thursday or Friday of this past week. And there was, when was this meeting changed to virtual from in-person? Because that particular notification had an in-person meeting date and time at the Redcap Room at this at the depot, which my wife and I went down and tried to locate and discovered that the meeting had been changed to virtual.
Madam Chair, would you like me to give a?
Thank you. Go ahead, County Manager.
Mr. Lord, I'm really sorry to hear you went down there. This is Ryan O'Connor, the county manager. We began printing the notices that go out to all households in Ramsey County a number of weeks ago, and since that time, the governor's executive order came out limiting gatherings due to COVID-19 preparedness. We did all that we could to notify through the means, and hopefully you saw signage when you got there. We were worried, though, about exactly what you described, and I apologize that you made a trip down there. We're glad that you found a way to get on and join us virtually and provide your comment this evening.
I did find no signage.
Thank you, Mr. Lord, for your comment and sharing that with us tonight. We do apologize for the inconvenience, and the intent, of course, was to make certain that everyone was notified due to the governor's stay-at-home order or due to the governor's orders newly. We did have to accommodate. Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments, Mike?
Madam Chair, there are no other hands in the queue at this time.
Thank you very, very much. Once again, just the reminders of our website. Commissioners available to talk with you, and of course, individual questions that can be pursued at 651-266-2131. Also, the information on our website on video that will help you to interpret if there is any need, your own statement, and or just generally understanding how changes can occur, even with a 0% property tax increase. I want to say thank you very, very much to all who have joined us tonight. And without further comment, then, for the public hearing, I will now call the public hearing to an end. This public hearing is closed. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you.